Thank everybody for coming this evening. Now we're going to welcome Kristi Alexander to do our invocation.
I don't have to come up to the mic for any questions. I'd like to pray for you all. Precious Father, I thank you for each of these, your children, who have given of their precious time and resources to serve the greater good of our community. I ask that you bless them in their endeavors, that you protect them and their families, that you strengthen them and still their hearts and minds. Speak your wisdom to them as they endeavor to represent us all in the workings of this organization. I ask all of this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Kristi. Appreciate it. Okay.
I would probably like to recommend that we stay standing.
I agree. I was just getting ready to tell Nick. Nick, would you please put that on our agenda for next time? That we'll always have an invocation and then...
Oh, we are having one.
Yeah, yeah. We voted on that several months ago.
Yeah.
But, well, I thought that they'd sit in the newspaper and I couldn't catch them to tell them, but now they need to still... Anyway, yeah, we'll remain standing. I should have said that this evening, too. Okay, public comment period.
I'm ready.
Okay. Moving forward, let's go to the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the previous meeting, our appropriations, the license to renew and renewal to sell cereal beverages for short stop. Do I hear a motion concerning the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we accept it.
Do I hear second?
I second it.
Okay. It moved in second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, same side. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, Nick, would you like to update us on the water tower?
So, I've been speaking with Viking Industries, who is supposed to refurbish the water tower. They're behind because of weather in Nebraska. They're supposed... They wanted to come... They'd be here the third week of November, which Eric and I didn't feel comfortable with because they started the tower and bad weather hits, they would have to stop. So if we drained the tower down, they started redoing the inside of the tower. They would have to stop until the weather improved, which would not be a good thing for us, so...
Not to mention if we would have any glitches, you just really don't want to do them during the holidays.
Right. Yeah, that too. So they're scheduled to come back March, April, depending on weather, but they'll come back March, April, first on their list.
This spring. Okay.
When we submitted RFP for that, did they give us a time that they would be here?
But it's... So it's always a estimate of when they can be here because of other projects. So their estimate was late August, and then weather, obviously, they got pushed back, so...
And that was our one contractor that we could basically use for that?
Well, we had two. The other one didn't bid on it.
Okay.
So, yeah, there was two. The one didn't bid, Viking bid. They're the ones that have always inspected the tank and done all the work for us in the past, so...
And that doesn't... Financially, it's not any problem?
No. I mean, the money, the monies that Heroes Act money that we got, the $320,000, the 140, I think it's 141,500 of that, we said we would use for refurbishing that.
And we don't have a due date that we have to...
I think you have three years to use the money.
That's what I thought. I thought it was a pretty long time.
It's not, though.
Okay. Okay, thank you. New business, Council Grove Area Trade and Tourism Association update.
Hi, guys.
Zoe.
I'm the pastor.
Ooh, handouts.
I recruited Angie for a big job.
Angie, probably one for Mark that probably will be here.
Oh, okay.
Maybe I'll help you go or not.
My part.
You have a message for me, so...
Thank you.
Hi, guys. So first, I want to start out by recognizing the amazing Halloween that we had over the weekend. That parade was incredible, and our business community just really supported every effort that we wanted to do to make it even more special, and we are so thankful that they did. So Halloween was a success, and now we're moving on to Home for the Holidays in Council Grove, which I'll get to that in a little bit. But what I've provided you with today is a synopsis kind of of where we were in 2021, because I'm not sure that you guys ever really received that, where we seem like we're about to end up in 2022, and then our goals and objectives for 2023. I know you guys all heard me come in and talk before, but in 2021 and 2022, our organization was really about resetting our baseline and preparing ourselves for growth and being the most impactful organization that we can for our community. We think we've really achieved those objectives. We created a mini strategic plan. We changed our office. Have you guys all seen our office? It's really awesome. We created new branding for our association and our travel and tourism marketing. We've done a lot of research this year to kind of discover and unearth the hidden opportunities in marketing that we have here as a rural Kansas community. And we've set organizational baseline standards. So these are what we do when we support events in our community. This is what we do when we look for marketing opportunities. All of that is kind of what we worked on this year, and I'm really proud to say that I think we nailed it with the support of all of our committees and our board. We've really come to a place where we are a strong organization that is really capable of doing what our community needs now. I'm not going to read through all of those numbers, but if you guys are looking at it, anything jumps out at you and you have questions, please feel free to ask. In 2022, we're working on our growth and goals again... Or I'm sorry. In 2022, we also had membership growth. We created a lot of new partnerships. I'm going to pass around one thing that we did do. The Council Grove Lake Association is a member, and we have two of these because they've been very popular. But I really wanted you guys to see what partnership with organizations that are already working on marketing our area as a travel and tourism destination, what they can look like when we partner with them to achieve consistent branding. And we don't have to reinvent the wheel or duplicate the wheel. We can augment it and make it better. So that's kind of been our philosophy going forward, that we're looking for those partnerships, and this was a great one. It worked out really well. They were a member. There are business members or there are businesses in there that are not Chamber members, but because we were able to work with that organization, we kind of justified that. And I think it's when we are able to logically look at those fine lines and make really good decisions for our community that we're able to do our best work. So I really want to make sure you guys saw that. Currently, I am in the midst of working on our 2022 annual report, and it will be partnered up with a 2023 marketing plan. So it's going to have everything we did in 2022 and then everything we're hoping to do in 2023, so people can get a really good, close, very detailed snapshot of our organization. In 2023, our plans are to grow our marketing efforts. We're looking for more traditional means, plus we're hoping to achieve some more organic things. We want more of those articles because when an ad tells you to go somewhere, it's not as impactful as when an author tells you to go somewhere. That experiential endorsement is what we're looking for. So we're also going to be partnering with some more online influencers, social media influencers, things like that. We have a new Council Grove guide that we're developing. It's going to focus not only on summer in Council Grove, but how much are... What a lush, rich offering we have all year long. So the front part will be spring and summer, and then you're going to flip it over, and the back is going to be all about fall and winter here. Because I can tell you from my office, we are missing out on a great marketing opportunity. Fall has been crazier than summer ever was with the travelers, the visitors, the tourists. It's just, it's nuts, and we need to really be maximizing that. We'll be launching our new website at our gala event. We're going to be having an annual fundraising gala in February, and that's where we will be launching our guide and our brand-new website. The website will be geared more towards onboarding new residents and onboarding new visitors. Because the city has their municipal branding and their municipal website, that's really where the residents get their information and get their communication. So we're taking on the role of providing that for our visitors and then the recruitment of new residents. And then the last, which I'm most excited about, is the expansion of the trolley program. I don't know how many of you got to go on the History and Mystery Tour over the weekend, but whoa, that was out-of-this-world great. It was very cool, and that's the kind of programming we would like to see more of. And we're so excited that the Council Grove Community Theater is an organization that we were able to onboard as a member immediately and support going forward. So that's really exciting. We're going to develop a new website, a new way of booking the trolley. We're going to be creating and positioning the trolley as well to be a sustainable effort moving forward. So we don't have to keep begging for funding for it. We want it to fund itself, and we want it to grow. We want to have another trolley in operation. We want to be bigger and better. So everything we do is about growth, like I've said. Next in your packet is a little snapshot of Waschanga this year. The financials of it, kind of are what we achieved that was new this year. The wristbands for all of the USD 417 students were a huge hit. We're really excited to carry forth that programming. Let me grab... Hey, Angie, have you had one of those packets?
Yeah.
So you guys can see all the details there. I don't need to read it to you. But in 2023, we are... We have a few very specific goals from a Chamber perspective. We are looking for better communication and greater transparency about the event as a whole. We are looking at opportunities to streamline expenses because you can see it's a pricey little baby. And we're hoping to have less of an environmental impact as well. So that means reusing marketing materials and having more accessible recycling and things like that. And then I'm hoping, and I sent out a community survey so that we could give our community a voice about Waschanga because they definitely have one. And I don't think there are any two community members that have the same vision for this event. But I think it's important that they feel heard and that we take all of those opinions into consideration as we're making decisions and moving forward. So that was kind of our first little dabble into that. But that also means we want more community involvement. If people have these opinions and these ideas, we want to empower them to come forward and be more active in the committee. So that's... Any questions about Waschanga that I can answer for you guys?
Just... Sure you heard about them. The restaurants, they fall under logistics.
Yes.
And we're going to increase the budget on that maybe next year.
Yes. I think we've been...
That's the one thing we've brought up and talked about in the past, but everything else I thought was fantastic.
Yeah. I do want to point out that at our last Waschanga committee meeting, we did decide that part of what we want to do going forward is using the money that we make for Waschanga to help to donate it back to the Riverwalk to help with improvements because those expenses are just growing for us. And if the Riverwalk had the snack shack, it had the bathrooms, it had all those things. Yeah. So I think we're going to be this year donating at least $20,000 towards that, but we are going to wait for some kind of Matchday, Giving Tuesday stuff, so... But we're pretty excited about that. I think these new initiatives really show how much the committee and the Chamber are invested in our community and how much we want to help this festival be an asset and not a burden to it. The next thing you're going to see is our little association attempt at creating a program so that we can have billboard vitality. We don't want billboards that sit there for years and years and years and look like they do right now. So in 2023, all of those are going to be updated. They're just too faded right now, and it's because we let them linger too long. So we are offering our business members the potential to collaborate. And on the backside of this sheet, you can see a mock-up of if the Cottage House chose to participate. They have not chosen yet. We just wanted an example. And this is an example of a travel and tourism opportunity marketing. So we all benefit. This highlights an asset of Council Grove, a historic hotel stay, and it gives them the opportunity to market themselves a little bit where they might not be able to financially afford it, and it gives us the opportunity to highlight one of our assets. So this is a program. It's still in the works. This is like really close to final, but probably not quite final, and we'll be launching that soon. But the point of it is, if we can create a sustainable program, we don't have to keep coming back and asking for funding to help with the billboard problems. So that's what that is. Any questions about the billboard program? I'm really excited about it.
Yeah. Will they be new billboards?
Well, we have 13... Well, we have nine billboards across the state currently, so we're looking at rewrapping them. It's been a project in the works for a while now. Yes, so we have specific locations, so...
Because there's a few here in town that...
Those are our welcome signs.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. They're included is part of our billboard program, but those... The welcome signs will not be part of the collaborative opportunities. Yeah. Yeah. Any other billboard? I think it's great. I think when we kind of talked about it as a board, it was exciting to see as entrepreneurs, it was exciting to see their enthusiasm for the program, too, because...
I know I bought a billboard.
Yeah.
And I hadn't realized, you know, they were so affordable. And I was like, why not? But now, I'm done with my contract on that, and I haven't renewed it simply because of that road's closed.
Right.
But are those going to be included in your... You know, those that are bought by or owned by a different... Because obviously, it's not Council Grove that I pay for that one. Do they know about your... Like, well, I need to make sure mine is updated and not with...
Yours won't have anything unless... Unless you want to partner and I'll help you create something cool, but let's do it. But yeah, anybody else's billboards, yeah.
Because there's some on 177, and I just wondered if they were going to kind of hold them to the same standard, I guess.
I... We don't really have that control over those organizations, but I will always offer up the collaborative opportunities so we can... We would work something out.
Do you have anybody committed yet to this?
Well, we haven't... We are going to open this up as a free thing. So we don't... A lot of people are going to know about it before other people, and they want to jump on it. So it's really going to launch one day, and it's first come, first served. The other thing that we're doing is we're going to pull out little categories. We want to make sure that we offer that the community organizations have an opportunity to hit them and other things. So that's why we only did six to start, so that we can make sure that we're showing the plethora of opportunities that are in our community. And then... But yeah, the Hayes House would love to be a part of it. Any other questions on billboards? I could talk about billboards for all... The next thing that I just wanted you guys to see because the Sales Tax Grant Committee, I think that's something like that, Promotions Grant, they just approved some holiday marketing funding for us, and I just wanted to kind of see where that money is going towards and give you another little taste of what our travel and tourism branding can look like. So you're going to see a couple of ads, one for Kansas Magazine November and December edition. That is the more holiday-themed one. The other one below that is an ad that we're putting in the O-Manhattan Tourism Guide, and they loved it. It was so exciting when they got it. And I was just at the TIAK conference, and the whole Manhattan Chamber came up and said how much they loved that ad. So it was really cute. And there as well, you're going to see a rack card that's being produced that will be handed out to all the businesses this week and a poster for our Home for the Holidays and some of the ideas and initiatives that we're going forward with for that this year.
Where it says an hour south of Manhattan. Boy, I can't wait till that says 30 minutes.
I know. If you speed, 25. I won't put that in the marketing. So that's really my little Chamber update. And Nick, anybody, if you guys have any questions or I can answer anything for you, let me know.
I just want to say that I am excited about your enthusiasm and energy that you brought to the chamber. It's been exciting.
I appreciate that. I do love this job very much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, guys.
Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, and I know you probably all have this, but our most popular brochure at the office, I wanted to make sure that everybody saw it.
I just saw it today for the first time at the coffee shop.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, I'm constantly running stuff over to the coffee shop.
Oh, great. There you go.
And do these go out to businesses or to businesses company to come ask for them?
Businesses usually come and ask for them when they run it. It's kind of been an ongoing thing, so they've always sort of had them. And so they just come tell me when they need more, and I try to keep a ton in stock because we go through those like crazy.
They are good.
Yeah.
Hand out to customers and things, so...
Thank you, guys.
Uh-huh. Sure, thank you. Okay. Anybody have any questions? City Lake Committee Recommendation, E21, Michael and Brooke Woodward.
Yeah. You want to speak on it later, or?
I can read it if you guys... I mean, I usually read them. That's fine. All right. The City Lake Committee Recommendation recommends the approval of a boundary line adjustment of 30 feet on the west side and 56 feet on the east side for a 24-by-33-foot garage for Michael and Brooke Woodward, E21. Lake Committee wouldn't look at it. Does not impede the neighbors' view or anything like that. The neighbors are aware and have a motion.
And the only modification that they agreed to also in addition before we went out to look is offsetting it so it won't interfere with the entrance roadway into their cabin and the neighbor next to it. That's the reason the shape isn't quite as normal as most of them out there are. You okay with that, Adrian?
Yes, I signed my name.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions or suggestions? Do I hear a motion to accept the City Lake Committee Recommendation?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. They moved in second to approve the City Lake Committee Recommendation for E21, Michael and Brooke Woodward. All in favor, put your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The outstanding checks resolution, Nick.
So as part of our audit, one of the recommendations was to get rid of old checks. And what Maggie and I are going to do once we run out of the current checks we have, we're going to have voided 90 or 120 days so we don't continue to have to carry checks for as long as we've had. So what basically I'm asking for is approval to have Brian come up with a resolution to cancel those warrant checks or outstanding checks, whatever you want to call them.
Okay.
Just to get them off the books.
Do we have a certain date, or?
Well, there's a... So it's been done before. It hasn't been done since 2017. And I gave him the ordinance of how it was done in '17. You just have to follow that. It's a state statute. It gives the city the authority to do that.
Okay. Is there like 90 days past? I mean, what he's going to tell us is...
Yeah, these are... Most of them, all these are over a year old.
Okay.
And we talked to the bank, and the bank went, well, those are the checks that the bank said they wouldn't find allowed through because they're so old.
Most banks consider them stale dated at six months.
Yeah. So...
I wondered.
But moving forward, the checks will have, I think, 90, 90 days or 120 days. Okay, we decided, but maybe we're supposed to check on that. So move forward. We don't have to continue to do this.
You can tell me if one of them was written to me, wouldn't you?
Should we do like an advertisement or write them a paper that says, you know, in case somebody doesn't know? I mean, this time...
Maybe they'll be going through their drawers. How do I have one of those checks?
Yeah, well, or a relative, you know, that has passed or something.
Depends on... Yeah, you're welcome. Debbie, some of the checks from 2015.
You know, kind of like Kansas has that. You know, you can go back and find money.
The lost and found.
Yeah. Okay, well...
Might save headaches later. I don't know.
It's however you guys want to do it.
Let's see how many of them there are and then...
The list is...
There's a list in here. There's a lot of...
Oh. My thing never came back up.
Yeah, the thing is, if somebody realizes that they've had that check, they can come back.
Right. The bank's not going to allow those checks to pass through because they're so old.
So they could come back and have them rewritten.
Yeah.
All right, good. Yeah, I glanced at this, but I never did really count them right. Page 21. Thank you. There's quite a few.
And a lot of them look like they're old water deposits where there wasn't much, like 89 cents or a dollar. So it would cost more to write the check than it did for the funding.
Yeah, some of the little bit larger ones Yeah, some of the little bit larger ones are the ones I would, you know, think that we might, like you said, so, okay. Alright, well, we can.
So you're putting some wording on the checks now that?
Yeah, once we get through the current stack we have, well, the new ones will have that on there, void after somebody days.
Okay. So.
Just need approval from you guys for Brian to write the resolution.
Write a resolution?
And to avoid those warrant checks.
Okay.
Make a motion, we allow Brian or ask Brian to write up the resolution, avoid the warrant checks. Second.
Any other conversation? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, we're on to the three mile extraterritorial discussion.
So we've, we've kind of talked about this at length at our last meeting, and it looks like Nick's done some digging, and there are actually some meeting minutes, because there was some question as to when and why it was repealed. But in early 2018, it looks like they passed the three mile and did the rezoning with agriculture and whatnot. Then it was realized fairly soon after that they hadn't followed the statute that requires a 20 day notice, it's actual, actually a published notice, as opposed to like some of the mailing outs that we do for, for other noticing. So there was an additional ordinance that was done in February that basically just repealed all of that. So the three mile zone that we had planned for was never fully implemented, and it looks like throughout the remainder of 2018, it was up for discussion and worked on by the Planning and Zoning Committee. And you, I've got minutes here in November where it talks about how it was repealed, there was discussion of how large to make residences that are in this agricultural zone area, two acres, three acres per, some recommendations, but it doesn't appear from anything that we've looked at that that was ever actually put out for a notice for that public hearing and then re-implemented. So basically, we need to just take the, what would be functionally, the 2195s that we had passed at first, and put that together as a plan, publish that plan, have an opportunity.
You're talking about 2193. 2195 was the one that repealed.
I apologize, I may have missed, yes, 2193 then is, is the one we want to go back to that actually outlines those agricultural districts.
I think Larry said the county says three acres.
The county had a different acreage requirement for the cemetery and sewer fields.
Right, and that's actually reflected as their recommendation in those, that would have been the 14th minutes that I think that they were going to recommend to the council to improve. So, so basically what we need to do is take that plan, and I know that there was a discussion at the meeting prior to that, it looks like Nick put these maps, did you get, did everybody get these?
Yep, they're all there.
Okay, and there are a couple of different ways that you could outline your three miles from a specific spot, or the meets and bounds on the quarter line, and they had made a recommendation that they go with the, they're using the quarters and section lines, and that would be a map of what was recommended, and we do have a certified meet and bounds description where they had gone out, and it looks like Steve Rossmer put that together for you guys. So it's ready to, that plan is ready to be published and set for a hearing, and then once we have that hearing, if it's still the, the wish of the council, then we can prepare an ordinance and put it on the agenda and have it passed, but we just need to, to go ahead and put that plan out to the public to comment on.
Now, does it yield, we have a public hearing at the start of the council meeting?
So it actually appears to be a, a public meeting, or the Planning and Zoning Committee is, is kind of what, what the statute says.
Well, they've had that, didn't you, Larry, you guys had that?
After a 20 day, after the 20 day notice?
Yes.
Yeah.
We had, we had a full house.
Was that, it was after a 20 day notice and not the milling out, then what, because then there's still nothing that I can see that shows exactly why it was repealed.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So.
Do you remember why it was repealed, Larry?
I was thinking that the parameters that were given into it was the entire three mile area, and that was before the maps were made up, first off, which includes the biggest portion of the City Lake also, you might check, but they had zoned all that agricultural where the City Lake is not and never will be agricultural. So the second reason for the mapping on here eliminated the City Lake Park section of this three mile zoning to be zoned as the City Lake Park with special requirements for it, instead of the entire three mile area being agricultural. Is that what it looks like?
Between the two maps.
Is it? I was sure that's what the, the idea was, when they'd written the first one up, it included the entire three mile area, City Lake and all, zoned agricultural, and I don't know that they had a public hearing either, but.
So in this July, in this July 11 meeting minutes, there's a review of the proposed agricultural boundaries, where commission members after reviewing two proposals that Steve Rossmer provided, so he had actually had provided them both at the same time back then.
Well, no, not those, that was when they decided whether to go with the sections or not.
Right.
That was one of the proposals, and the other was to do the meets and bounds things.
Sure.
That's where we picked that, they were the two proposals he made.
But that was in July of 18, which was way after we repealed it, though. Because we repealed it in February of 18.
He has approved in December of 17.
Right, see, no, that was done prior to the approval.
2193 was actually in December of 17.
Right.
And then it was repealed in February of 18.
Right.
Not getting was in July of 18.
Right, and July of 18 is when we came up with this. So when did they decide that this was not going to work?
Well, does that have the City Lake Park sectioned out of it?
One, one of those maps does, and the other one doesn't.
I was going to say, because.
You don't have yours.
No, the code updated.
Yeah, we don't have a code to get in, we need the pass codes.
This is one.
So this is one. And then this is, this is the one where it's sectioned out.
Yeah, page 26 is sectioned out, yeah.
Page 26.
Majority approved, right.
And section lines, that does have that, that's the original.
So there's green lines, but I don't understand the green line to the east, what is that?
Well, do you see the three mile pins all the way out?
Oh, there.
It's a little.
It's a circle going out from the center, basically. They just did it with pins on a, on Google Earth.
So, yeah, the limits using quarters and section lines has like not, is a part of that.
Right.
So which is the one you guys recommended?
Yeah, so now, those, those have been surveyed out there, well, yeah, they've been surveyed also, there should be another drawing from Mr. Brusmer with Geotech that just has the Lake Park section.
Right, but it appears though for your three mile, though, because meets and bounds that we have plotted would be then this, which he said does not include that area.
Yes.
So, so then I think our plan is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine now.
Okay, we don't have pass codes to give.
Because. The agricultural, well, agricultural wouldn't fit in any way, meter, form, and would have to be corrected as soon as possible afterwards.
So it was just carved out right there?
It was carved out.
Okay.
Yep, and he's got the carved out piece on a map also. That shows, and those will all be City Lake zoning items, City Lake Park, and all the remainder of it's agricultural.
Right, and that, that was what the 2193 had had, was all of them carved, all of the rest of the agricultural was carved out, so. But I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken today, we just need to put it together.
Yeah, basically have a discussion about it so we can move forward with it.
Start with it.
Because we couldn't discuss doing anything with it at the work study when it came up.
Right.
So that's the reason I put on the agenda, so we can have discussions so we can move forward with it.
I figured out that was in November and December after I'd been elected, but it wasn't at a meeting, so, you know, so I was lost.
Well, this started, this, you guys, I think this discussion on this started in 2015.
It started a long time ago, I thought it was done.
So when I came on in November of 17, they were just trying to get it finished up, and I was obviously new, so I didn't know what was going on, so.
Did you have video of the meeting?
No, we have video of the meeting.
I mean, I remember being discussed, so I think, I would think I would have been here.
We, we filmed them before, we, we used to just come and film them. You could look back and see.
Did you have an actual date, time of month?
I know there was a spell when you guys weren't filming.
Yeah, though, right after, right after.
How far after would you have signed these?
If you need an actual, no, the meeting was.
How far after would you have signed those ordinances?
It would have been, when was 2193?
Uh, just, 2193 was in December of 17.
December of 17.
Of 17.
So, but. So when you said you had the full house and all the people in here and everything, all of that would have been way before you did this, that would have been when you passed the first version, so you really need to go back and do that again.
Because, yeah.
Have it have that actual notice, do that with, with planning and zoning, with this new map and that new plan, I think.
Right, because at that time, everyone was in there and we explained the reason for, the purpose for the three mile.
Right.
The fact that whatever's out there is grandfathered in, there's no issues with any of that, and all it does is allow someone who wants to put something not allowed in agricultural zoning out there has to request a change in zoning before they can do that. So someone can't come in overnight and just buy up 40, 50 acres out there and plop down whatever they want, because the city wouldn't have any say so, and neither would the county, since they don't zone it either.
And, you know, we, we've talked about things like, like the big corporations coming in and doing stuff just outside of town or whatever. I'll give you guys another example that I've dealt with for a whole, a really long time, the last couple of years, that isn't here yet, but could be at some point, and that's all of the weed farms that showed up all around our cities in Oklahoma when they passed the marijuana legalization. A lot of those, so, so you want, so, stuff like that could come in, and that's not really agricultural, so.
But, yeah, we had a big long discussion. Most of them seemed satisfied after we got done with the meeting.
It's not regulated agricultural.
It was real hard for a while.
No, it's very agricultural, but, yeah.
So we need to, but are the, the, like hemp farms that aren't, you know, I mean, like hemp's become kind of a new.
But it's still highly regulated.
Still, because I mean, they make robe and, I mean, all clothes, all kinds of.
Yeah, that's not due to real, I just, when I was thinking, we were talking about, you were getting yourself a busker where you have to be able to approve stuff, that was the place where we got caught not ready.
Not ready.
Yeah.
So we just need to give you the okay to go ahead and revamp that, or?
I don't even know that the action needs to be taken tonight, it's not really, it's just set for discussion on your agenda.
Yep.
So we can go over it in public right now, we're, we're talking about it, so, and then what I would say is Nick and I will get together and we'll put together that, we'll, we'll probably work with the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Yeah.
And to, to put that out for a public hearing before planning and zoning, and then they will make a recommendation to the council, and then it will come on to council for approval of a resolution that would basically match 2193, except it's going to have that meets and bounds.
For the lake?
For the, for the quarters and section lines that was put together, so we just need to clarify that a little bit better.
Works.
Sounds good, so, we'll put that in here, you guys escort them to do that. As, as you have time, thank you. Okay, anybody, we're all settled on that, everybody having? There's mine.
She's done it.
Yeah.
Why some chicken going, obviously, slipped off.
Okay, on the governing body comments, Jason?
Just thanks for the Halloween parade, that was pretty amazing. And I liked the way you turned it around and ran it the other direction, you used the trolley.
The trolley.
And all that, it's, that was good.
Yeah, who came up with that idea to start it at this, I mean, that was.
I think that the, starting it over by the statues gave people, last year we did it by the high school, it was so congested, and, and it just, it didn't make any sense, but it was great because we had a half an hour of writing time and our community was talking, and it was so fun, and next year we'll have our outside speakers on the trolley too, so we'll be blasting some really cool Halloween music, and it's gonna, it's just going to keep getting better.
I love seeing the bridge just full of those trick or treaters, I love that, that was great, I was like, wow, that's new. Good job.
It was definitely the biggest one, I think, that.
Well, the weather was perfect.
That thing, yeah. Very blessed.
Okay, yeah, do you have anything, Denise?
Yeah, I just, I think I just said it. Good job on the Halloween party.
Um, yeah, the Halloween parade was awesome, I'd also like to thank Dave May for putting together that trolley tour, it was super fun, and all the folks that helped out with it, stuff like that's what keeps the community alive, so thanks a lot to Dave. We've got a couple of things to hit Nick up afterwards, but other than that, I'm good to go, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, sure, Larry?
I have nothing to say to me.
Okay, Sharon?
Just ditto, and thank you, Zoe, for the future plans, too, it's just exciting to see, and it's nice to see kind of comparison of what's happened and where it's going, and thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Brian?
I think I've already muddled things up enough.
I do want to thank Sharon, too, I don't know who put the historic.
Oh, yeah, for Sunday.
Tour together, but I, thanks for just giving me an opportunity to play Lizzo.
It was good, that was Sunday afternoon, it was good.
And the weather was perfect. Thank goodness.
On Saturday, I went and got a certificate for Environmental Excellence Board for our work helping kids' wildlife and parks by helping them with their grant to get the funding to finish the foothills trail.
That's wonderful, that's great. We appreciate all your hard work on that, I know you've worked hard with the committee, and appreciate you going in and accepting it.
I have one quick thing, I'll hit you up, but I don't want to speak about it publicly because I told someone that I would, cats is coming up again. Then, there she's, and supposedly she told me that there was a program in the past where K-State came down and trapped cats and took like neuter them and spay them, is that something? And I know we've brought this up a million times, and obviously we would do it if we could.
Yeah, I think in the past, cat problems are a problem everywhere, I think every community has a problem with it, and I think in the past when we've asked K-State, they've been busy helping other communities.
With everyone else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I know we've looked at trapping and doing it ourselves, but you run into, when Randy Hahn was here, he looked at it, looked at stuff, and he said that if you trap somebody's house cat as their pet, and you get them spayed or neutered and you want that done, you could be liable for something happening to their cat.
Fries cats.
Yeah, so he's, yeah, or just, so.
Yeah, I get it.
So it's compromised, just a bad deal, I mean.
I'd be like, I haven't got that done for free.
Has offered in the past, trapped cats and they'll spay and neuter them, they've done that, I think they did that to reduce cost, but they've only done that once since I've been here, so.
Didn't they trap or caught several of them and took them out to farms?
I don't remember that.
We did that at the Home Depot Park, because we didn't get any help over there.
Usually take them out, the farms that wanted them.
Yeah, the biggest issue is you have people who feed them, and then they all migrate to that area.
Supposedly that lady is moving, she feeds them over by my apartment, and we spoke.
We have a pretty good Fox population on Delphine, it's.
Well, yeah, I used to have a problem with.
But not everybody has a little bit of rural area around, so I know that.
Yeah, I know Mark Burner says he has an issue over in his neighborhood, so.
Yeah, it's becoming a thing, and it's getting cold, so.
If anybody makes anybody, makes anybody feel better, Cottonwood has a worse problem.
Emporia had one that they were working on, the house had 80 plus cats in it.
I remember.
Let him match. Let me see that a lot.
Nice, be nice.
Make sure you get that for this.
Let him match.
I'm a cat lover, so.
No, I don't want that many around. I can talk to the vet, rock and roll the vet, see if they have any future plans of if you trap cats.
Okay, so here's a suggestion, I, because a lot of those are for our pets, for people that couldn't afford to get them spayed, and I'm, you know, we can all have our opinion, but the fact is, they have a pet, they can't afford to get it spayed, and then we have more and more and more and more, or neuter, whatever the case may be, I wondered about trying to start some sort of a fund that people could donate to, like have it at a bank or something, where you could go and deposit money into the fund for, and it's specifically for spaying and neutering pets, that, and it would have to be a proven need, you know, I mean.
Well, I think that you should probably do something with the vets, have them have a fund, people go up there and donate, have a cat spayed or neutered or something like that, I'm sure K State can order a trolley.
I just think we need something publicly that says, hey.
Vet school or something?
Well, they used to, so the way it works is somebody's got to trap them, is the first thing, which I don't know how many people trap around here anymore.
Oh, it isn't hard, you put some tuna in, and they go in the cage, and they're there.
And then they'll come down, you'll schedule it, when you're trapped, and you'll schedule when they're going to come down and take care of it, so.
Good, I guess the reason I'm asking that is, is it, it's one of those things where we can contact K-State, and they can say, well, on this day in the future, we could do that.
Yeah.
So then we can. We've talked to the traffic park a few days, week.
Yeah, I think the thing that we ended up not, the reason we ended up not doing it was at the advice of the, the city attorney at the time, Randy Hahn, with his worry of catching someone's house cat.
That's what I was saying, it's the same whether K-State's doing it or whether we're doing it, we still have that same issue.
But here would be a suggestion on that, is that we make an announcement that, because I would say that the majority of council group says we got a cat problem, and so I think the way we say that is if you do not want your cat trapped, you need to keep it inside, you know, I mean, well, I'm sorry, but.
I'm wondering if we should, you know, the, what Randy said is we couldn't have an ordinance to do this, you know, because of, because of that, or he shouldn't, he didn't say we couldn't, he said there was, you know, that fine line, and Brian, you probably know a little bit more about this, but.
No, this is.
New stuff for you. Not your cup of tea, is it? But I'm wondering if we could somehow talk with others, or check with municipality, you know, League of Municipalities or something, and see if there's a way we can do a resolution that, yes, your, your cat must be, if your cat is not spayed or neutered, and it's caught and it's not registered, because we're supposed to, you know, we need to register dogs, and that, you know, you probably should register a cat, too. So if you, if your cat or dog is caught and not registered, then, and it's not spayed or neutered, it will be subject to spay or neutering, because that gives them an opportunity.
No, we don't.
But could we, a lot of cities do.
And the thing, if you have an outdoor cat, most cats that are indoor or don't wear a collar with a thing hanging from it.
Yes, yeah.
Because they get caught on stuff, so even if you did have that, the cats that indoor or outdoor cats could go outside and you have no idea.
But if you register your cat, you need to put something on it, I mean, you know, you need, there needs to be some kind of.
They can put.
Yeah.
That they can be inserted into the scan, they can.
There's things that they.
Are they doing that at the vet now?
Chipping, they do it. Yeah.
Because we didn't, when I, when the vet was.
They never chip cats, though.
They also do that little nip in the ear when they, when they've been spayed or neutered too, you know, that.
My cat.
To me, there's a problem with an outdoor cat, so.
I think they probably get more mileage figured out away to trap them.
Dogs go to stand.
I was going to say, the difference of how we treat cat owners and dog owners, I feel like that kind of needs addressed.
There is a difference, yeah.
There, there is a difference, but that difference from a legal perspective is mostly due to the danger to the public, and the cats don't present the same danger to the public as the random pit bulls running around downtown.
Well, when we have as many as we do, that could lead to unsanitary conditions, and.
Right, but it's just a different kind of danger.
Why don't we, why don't we check the League of Municipalities, I can make some calls and, you know, get some.
We can figure it out, we've got this before.
And we do have two vets, so, I mean, we have the, the traveling vet, so we do have two, a couple of different vets that could.
Yeah, Patricia, Dr. Patricia. Well, let's do that, talk with K-State, and we'll see what we can come up with, a kitty cat problem, okay? Very good, Nick, do you have anything else?
That's it.
That's all, okay, and I don't think I have anything, so with that, do we have any